We'll call this meeting to order. Need to read a couple of things, starting. The governor has declared a state of emergency to exist in California, a result of the threat of COVID-19. While the governor recently issued Executive Order N 0721, which lifted certain orders and associated restrictions, there are still public health directives in place. Executive Order N 0821 also allows local legislative bodies to continue to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. Public's health and well-being are the top priority of the city and your urge to take all appropriate health and safety precautions. This meeting is utilizing Zoom application for the live broadcast. For this meeting, we'll be using the question-and-answers functionality of this tool in order to accommodate public comment. On your device, the question-and-answer section of the app is located at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For those that would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the question-and-answers portion of the app, and be sure to state the item you will be commenting on. During the public comment of each item, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific item. Be timely with your questions, as once public hearing is closed or the item has been discussed by council and voted on, no more comments will be accepted for that item. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Espendola.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
All right. Tonight's invocation will be given by Mr. Dan Colligan, Sutter County Chaplain and First Baptist Church of Yuba City Pastor, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by George Marlowe. If you'll please stand.
Holy Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve this great city and state. May we find favor in your sight as we are led by the Spirit. And Father, forgive us our sins. May we trust you, you alone. We ask that you surround us with the wisdom and understanding to make the right decisions, to find guidance and help for those who are in authority. May you protect our families and their lives from harm and give them good health. May you give them the clarity to do what is right and not just what is popular. May we all be guided by the Word of God and its truth. Lord, we give grace to those who are humble. Thank you for the service of our men and women who protect us and keep us safe. May Yuba City be a lighthouse for those who are lost, and may we show them the way of the truth and the light. Thank you, Lord, for our mayor, our city council, and administrators, in Christ's name. Amen.
Ready, hands salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both. All right. We would have the city attorneys report on any closed-session items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. And is there any agenda modifications to this evening's agenda? All right, hearing none, and we'll proceed. We'll go right into Agenda Item 1, which is a ceremonial presentation for Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Proclamation. And I'd like to invite Rose Zonunga, the councilman and advocate for Casa de Esperanza, to come forward. Did I say it correctly? Okay. All right, and before we get started, I believe we got one of our youth commissioners here. Would you like to come down and join us as well? Actually, we'll just get you right there on the other side of Rose. Thank you for joining us tonight. I know that this is something with having three daughters that very much concerns me when they're out in the public and dating. So thank you for bringing this forward. We would like to please welcome Casa de Esperanza, Council Advocate, Ro- Rose.
Rosa Zuniga.
Zuniga. Okay, Rosa Zuniga. Teen Dating Violence Awareness Prevention Month, February 2022. One in three adolescent girls in the United States is a victim of physical, emotional, or verbal abuse from a dating partner, a figure that far exceeds victimization rates for other types of violence affecting youth. High school students who experience physical violence in a dating relationship are more likely to use drugs and alcohol, are at greater risk of suicide, and are much more likely to carry patterns of abuse into future relationships, engage in risky sexual behavior, unhealthy dieting behaviors, experience disruption of normal development of self-esteem and body image. Only 33% of teens who are in an abusive relationship ever tell anyone about the abuse, and 81% of parents surveyed either believe teen dating violence is not an issue or admit that they do not know it as one. The Establishment of Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month will benefit young women, their families, schools, and communities to raise community awareness and to provide training for teachers, counselors, and school staff so that they may recognize when youth are exhibiting signs of dating violence. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Dave Shaw, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire city council, proclaim that February 2022 is Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month and urge all agencies and businesses to work toward ending teen dating violence done this 15th day of February 2022. We'd like to present that proclamation to you, that's what I just read is what it says. And would you like to make a few comments?
Yes. Well, thank you for having me here. The ladies and staff at Casa de Esperanza would like to thank you for your continued support. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And now that we have one of our youth commissioners here, I would like to ask that the youth commission join us in this and help bring awareness to your colleagues at school and in the community about the importance of this relevancy of this issue. Would you like to say anything?
Definitely. In today's day and age, we see a lot of dating violence, especially, you know, being a teen girl myself. It's not like I haven't seen my friends go through it, some of my closest family members. So I think this month will be very important.
How about introducing yourself to everybody?
Yes. My name is Sonia Jawanda, and I am a member of our youth commission. I go to River Valley High School.
Thank you. Would any other council members like to say anything? All right. Would you like to have us put a photo picture? All right, let's move to Agenda Item 2, Appearance of Interested Citizens. You're welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be considered at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Members of the public will have three minutes to speak. Written requests received at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment. Do we have any public comments tonight? And I have two speaker cards. And we will just take them in whatever order I have here. So is it Bijan? Sorry, I cannot pronounce the last. Bijan?
Bijan.
Bijan. Okay. Please come to the mic, and if you could introduce yourself so I don't mess it up.
Good evening, honorable members of the council. It's a pleasure to be with you here, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bijan Parhisgarh, and I'm here today to speak about the integrity for the members of the public or elected officials. As a civil servant and representative of people, I strongly believe that one should act in an above-the-board manner and be considerate of the implications of his or her decisions and actions. Public perceptions and reactions are important and oftentimes shall not be brushed off as just mere perceptions. I will offer you one example tonight. Through recent articles in our local papers, Territorial Dispatch and Appeal Democrat, I learned about the, one of the members of the Sutter County Board of Supervisors, Mr. Dan Flores, of a decision to join Marysville as the Community Development Director. This move brings me a few, more than a few questions in mind. Would Mr. Flores be able to secure this position without the influence of and the inside knowledge from his current position as the Board of Supervisors? It's great to look for and work cooperatively and collaboratively with other entities in the region. Adopting joint powers agreement that has been done in many, many regions in the state would have been one such a way to find collaborative and cooperative ways of working with others without double-dipping into taxpayers' pockets again and again. Mr. Flores himself did own a few businesses and sold one of them to the county. I wonder how his other businesses are doing, especially under the pandemic rules and protocols perpetuated under his reign while he's a county supervisor. Where was Mr. Flores's advocacy for businesses then? When a public employee applies and for, and offered a position with the same entity, oftentimes it could be viewed or looked at as conflict of interest or at least incompatible activity. And it's against the law. Why not the same rule apply when both public positions are not within the same jurisdiction? A proposal for bringing a Costco for Sutter County was rejected once, and now seems to pop up as a proposal for Yuba County. Does the timing of this proposal have any relation with Mr. Flores's decision for seeking employment with the city? Would this be an example of good, of a proco? Almost none. I apologize for running over. Marysville is a charming city with much history and untapped potential. At one time, it was even considered to be the capital of the state of California. The city, under the right leadership and intentions, can grow flourish and attract commerce and businesses. Is Mr. Flores really concerned about the well-being of the region, or is he thinking of enriching himself by using his position of authority with the county? He will be in a position of authority with both entities, and the old saying is, if it walks like a duck, if it looks like a duck, most probably is a duck. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight.
Thank you. And we'll go to the next speaker, which is Courtney Ortega.
Good evening, council. I am a Yuba City community member, and I have come to speak this evening to bring a local ethical concern to your attention. Within the last few months, our county supervisor, Dan Flores, has sold his private business to a local government agency and then been hired by a different local agency. He now works full-time for the City of Marysville while still remaining a county supervisor. He is now in charge of economic decisions for both jurisdictions, Sutter County and the City of Marysville. Are supervisors allowed to have jobs? Of course. However, what Dan Flores is doing now is of ethical concern as well as a conflict of interest due to natural competition between communities. If an opportunity arises, he can use that opportunity to help one jurisdiction or the other, but it cannot serve both simultaneously. That just isn't the nature of taxes, government, or communities. And I won't bore you with the same exact speech that Mr. Bijan said so beautifully, but I think we all understand that it just doesn't work. You can't serve Marysville and Yuba City at the same time, even though oftentimes we think of ourselves as one big community. So ultimately, economic positions are important. They control the fate of millions of dollars between communities. And whether we say one community or not, when it comes to jurisdictions, that just isn't the reality of the situation. There will always be competition, and that's why Marysville's decision to hire an active supervisor is just a huge mistake for Jim Shad and for Dan Flores. I'm bringing this to your attention because you're very well-connected with both of these agencies, and this error in judgment should concern you as well, because it affects you and it affects your constituents like me. In addition, this lack of judgment concerns me regarding many other ethical concerns regarding our local government in general. Does our local government truly reflect community service? You are all elected representatives, and your jobs are to serve your districts and listen to your constituents, not to assume your job, your ideas are better than ours and to act in your own benefit. I will leave you all with this quote and would like to urge you to consider your own behavior and actions towards your community. He who passively accepts evil is as much involved in it as he who perpetuates it. And that was Dr. King. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. I will just add to what you both have brought forward tonight, just a simple fact that I know the council is all aware of it, but please be assured that the five of us setting up here will do everything we possibly can to protect the integrity of this council and this city. And because he is on the, he's the county, not the city, but we will protect the integrity that we have here in these chambers as a city. Thank you. Any other comments from the public? All right. Hearing none. Is there any online?
No public comment.
Okay. Let's move to Agenda Items 3 through 5, the Consent Calendar. All matters listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Excuse me. Would anyone from the public like to speak on these items tonight? Any comments from the public? Are there any online?
No public comment.
Any questions, comments, or actions from the council?
To the mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move that we approve the consent calendar, Agenda Items 3 through 5.
Second.
We have a motion from the vice mayor and a second by Councilmember Espendola. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. We will move right along to Agenda Item 6, which is the public meeting to renew the Yuba-Sutter Tourism Improvement District. And tonight, we will have Mr. Ben Moody, who's our Public Works and Development Services Director. Mr. Moody.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. So the item before you is a three-part process, and so with that, it's part of the process to renew the Yuba-Sutter Lodging Association's Tourist Business Improvement District. This is a self-assessment that was initiated five years ago to establish this district that captures a 2% tax, that's a self-assessed tax that then is used with the Yuba-Sutter Lodging Association for marketing, for marketing purposes and to promote the district. And so with this three-part process, the first process began in January, where 50% of the assessed value of the tax plus was received that they were for renewing the tourist business improvement district. And so with that, with the renewal, instead of being five years, the renewal could be up to 10 years. And so what we have, so with that, with the petition of the receipt of more than 50%, the City of Yuba City approved a resolution of intent to hold a public hearing on March 15th. And then with that, there is also the second part, which is today, which is to allow open discussion for or against, to provide discussion on the matter, with the final hearing being held on 3/15. And so as we work through it, Part 1, Part 2, Part 3, it includes both Yuba County and Yuba City, Sutter County. And so it's a little interesting because it also includes Yuba County properties with this district, because when it was formed, there was coordination with those districts, with those counties and those local agencies that it could be formed and set up. And so even though we have Mary, it's coming before the City of Yuba City, there are Yuba County and Marysville businesses included in that district. And so with that, we've recently received some feedback from the businesses. We've received 11 notices of, that they've either changed their mind or have publicly written a statement that they are no longer for the district. And so that is definitely part of this process, is that they were with, with the notice of intention. There was a mailer that went out to all of the businesses, and then they have, through this period, they have the ability to either weigh in and protest or change their mind up until the March 15th meeting. And so with that, we've recently taken in 11 protests, and then they'll be counted unless changed for the 3/15 meeting. And so with us here tonight is also the Yuba-Sutter Lodging Association rep, and then Gina Reed with Civitas, who is the consultant, help coordinating that for any specific questions. And so tonight, the recommendation is really just to open public testimony, to allow members of the public to provide comments for the renewal, and then move to the future process, which would be the public hearing on the matter. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any questions from the council before we open the public hearing? Okay. Hearing none. We will go ahead and open the public hearing testimony for the public to provide comments on the renewal of the Yuba-Sutter Tourism Improvement District. I have one card that was presented, Mr. Jesse Baines. Okay, oh, miss, I'm sorry.
Mrs.
Mrs.
Hi, and thank you, Mayor Shaw and the rest of the council for giving me the opportunity to speak behalf of the renewal of the district. Again, my name's Jesse Baines. My husband and I own Travel Lodge Yuba City. We, along with 10 other businesses, oppose the renewal. We opposed it five years ago, and we continue to oppose it. We do not see any benefit to our business, and so at this point, we are in strong opposition, and we appreciate the opportunity to be able to voice that opposition. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other speakers that would like to speak on this matter tonight? Any other speakers? Is there any online?
No public comment.
All right, then we will come back and close the public hearing testimony, and we will bring it back to any further council questions. Mr. Moody?
To the mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Ben, 11 letters of protest folks wanting to withdraw, or just of how many businesses?
So there's 24 businesses, and so of that, we recently, yesterday and today, received 11. Is some of those, I didn't have the exact count, some of those initially didn't sign the petition to be included, and so, but there are a majority of them that requested to, they changed their mind. And so they could change their mind, and they could change their mind again up until that, the meeting at 3/15, but right now, they've been received as a formal no. The interesting part with it is that it's based on the tax value received, and so it's not the number of businesses. And so even though it's 24 businesses, it's not 13 prevails. It's really, it's based on the value of the last fiscal year. And this read on the, with Civitas could help explain it a little bit more detail if so, but it's really, if you sell a room, average cost of $200, and your tax assessment for that 2% would then be $4 versus somebody that's renting a room for 100, they have more weight than the person, up to a certain amount.
And then just to follow, this is a pass-through situation. It doesn't come out of the business owner's pocket. It's passed on to the tenant?
So when a person comes in, 100, if a $100 room is sold, 10% TOT, so there's a transit occupancy tax that comes to the city, and then there's a 2% self for this tourist improvement district that then is collected by the city. We retain a small fee, a 2% of the 2% for the accounting of it, and then that 98% of that 2% goes back to the district, which is then managed by a board as to how they fund it, how they conduct their operations.
All right, thank you.
Okay. He's already answered. All right. Any other questions?
Mayor, has, I guess, Mrs. Baines, I'm kind of curious to understand, so when there was opposition before and there's opposition now, how have those just, have you had an opportunity to talk to the association directly in those terms of the opposition, not within our staff?
Please go to the mic, please. If you can go to the mic, please.
We have had representatives from the board come to talk and try to convince our businesses as well as multiple other businesses. They've come many, many times to try to convince us or try to persuade us. And at this point, I know five years ago, in what, 2017, my husband Josh, he did come in, he did oppose it at that time, and we continue to oppose it, along with the other 10 businesses.
Do you see any effect on your business with the additional taxes that are, that Mr. Moody described?
Well, what we're doing is we're putting that on our, well, I would say our guests that come in to our properties, it's additional cost.
Does it cause your business any less guests because of that additional cost? I'm just curious to understand.
And that's going to vary day by day in terms of, you know, what, how many guests you're going to have coming into your hotels. The cost per day is going to vary. There may be days when it's going to be, you know, a higher cost, and then on top of that, you're going to have that 2%, and other days, you're going to have a, you know, lower room rate. So it really varies on supply and demand. But at this point, we have not seen a benefit to our business, and our understanding is, in talking with other businesses, we're not seeing a benefit. Just recently, I'll just give you an example, is just this week, we got an email, I guess it was from the marketing that was hired by the tourism board, just this, just a few days ago, asking if we can give a quote on possible rooms, you know, that I guess a film crew might need. But we have not received anything for the five years. Maybe they've come, I think they came in 2019 and took a couple of pictures. We have not had anybody come during this, you know, with the pandemic, with everything going on, with all these businesses struggling. We didn't get a caller visiting, saying, hey, what can we do to help you? So we don't feel like we've got any help from the, from the board. So at this point, that's why we're opposing it, and many of the other businesses that oppose it as well feel like that.
Okay. Thank you for answering those questions and being so honest in your response. It is, it is probably, it would be difficult to pay for something that you're not feeling a benefit. I guess I kind of see it like my AAA card. I only use it when I really need it, right? And every time I pay the bill, I'm like, gosh, why am I paying for this? But I think that, you know, your statements are valid, and I appreciate But I think that, you know, your statements are valid and I appreciate you being here tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it, council.
Vice Mayor, you have any questions? Okay. Mr. Moody, are, I don't know if it's either now or at the next hearing, might be good to hear what is actually being done by the board and such with the funds that are going through, a quick overview? I don't know if they're prepared tonight or if that's going to be the next one.
Yeah.
At your pleasure.
Are you? Yeah, let's do it next meeting and let's, we would like you here in person to present at the next hearing, please.
Definitely, through the mayor, I'm on the call, Jacob Young, the president of the Yuba Sutter Lodging Association. Sorry to be saggy, we can definitely have that available. I'm sorry to hear that the Travel Lodge feels that they have not received the benefit of these efforts. I will personally reach out to Jesse and Josh to connect with them, as far as not so much, as she said, soliciting or campaigning for the effort, but more so to educate and inform so that they are aware of what has been done. In the last five years, we have not had any involvement from Travel Lodge in this effort. And this is the first time that I have had them speaking to that. I was not here five years ago when the initial TBID was passed. But we also have not had any contact requesting, you know, to demonstrate where is this money going, where are these efforts going? But we have had continued activity. We do our annual report to the city, but we'd be happy to showcase what we are doing, where that money's been going, especially as we are now coming out of the COVID pandemic. We are getting into a lot more regular activity that is easier to showcase, but I'd be happy to meet individually with Travel Lodge and any of these entities that have signed letters of opposition to this renewal to help educate and inform them so they can make the most informed decision before next month's meeting.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Sodola.
Thank you, Mayor. Is his name Jacob, the gentleman?
Yes, that's correct.
I wanted to clarify. Yeah, I'm glad you covered the last, I think it would be important to have a conversation with all 11 individuals that are in this moment opposing. It is, it's not good to hear that, to be honest with you, as one of five of the council, to hear that 11, almost half of your members are not pleased with the services. So, I hope there's more to report to us beyond, I remember your presentations clearly from the last several years and there had been some really good responses of your work, yet here we are, this is my first time renewing with a community, so I would hope that you have a higher consensus than it seems at this point. So, I would ask for you to reach out to all 11 and make sure that you have some sort of plan on how to engage if they continue not to be supportive. And if you bring them in and they're supportive, then things will look differently. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
Jacob, I wonder if you could do, perhaps our listeners a favor, and I will admit, maybe me, explain the difference between the Lodging Association and the Tourism Improvement District? I've heard both terms.
So, the Tourism Improvement District, so that's the TBID, and Gina may be able to jump in to explain more the logistics of how that, you know, operates in that regard. I guess Gina, if you want to answer that question, you'd probably be the best from Civitas on the lead of the phone, as explaining that difference.
Sure. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Fantastic. So, the TID is just a funding mechanism. It allows us to pass, or for the lodging businesses to pay and pass on to the guests the 2% assessment. The Lodging Association is actually the nonprofit entity that's responsible for implementing the programs with the funds that are raised through the Tourism Improvement District. Does that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am, it does. Thank you very much.
Of course.
Councilmember Boom Garden.
Yeah, this is more for staff. I noticed nine of the lists up there are Yuba City. It seems like a clear majority are outside the City of Yuba City. Perhaps over the next few weeks, we can get a little history. I apologize for not getting that earlier, I was out of town. But it's interesting to me that we would be the administrative agency for something that is so overwhelmingly not Yuba City. And I'm not, fundamentally, I'm not opposed to that, but it just, it seems awkward that, that, you know, here we are going to be making a decision about businesses that potentially reside within another county or within our county, but not under our city. I'm curious about history a bit, if that would be possible for staff to provide us with, doesn't have to be a big, long thing, just why it was, how it was, and why we, why we are in a position to either deny or approve it.
Any other questions? Mr. Moody?
Yeah, we could definitely add more detail on the staff report and then have the presentation. You know, the little bit of history I have is that Yuba City took the lead as, for an economic development aspect and then took that on and partnered with the chamber as they worked through that and then brought in Yuba County and Sutter County as the players. And there's more hotels in Yuba County than there were at Sutter County.
There's more property in Yuba County on this listing than there is Yuba City.
That's what I'm saying, in Yuba County, Mary, that's what I mean, on that side of the river. But we were the, we were the agency that took the lead with the chamber.
Through the mayor, it would just stand to reason that if this is a regional effort, then we also ought to probably be speaking with those who are our regional partners before we make a decision on, on something like this on the 15th of March.
Absolutely.
And Councilmember Boom Garden, if I may, through the mayor, just so you're aware, when this was first formed, it was at the request of the City of Yuba City to be the lead jurisdiction. I guess we can give more details on that before the meetings, you're informed on that as well. But at the time of the council, it was their request to be the lead jurisdiction and all the other jurisdictions voted in favor of that. But we can give you full details and help answer any questions you may have.
I appreciate that. I think it's, I'm not exactly sure when that occurred, but now is now. And I think it'd be important for us to, to reach back out to our regional partners and see if that system's still working for them. Again, I would have a hard time voting yes or no on something that impacts business, the majority of the businesses in another county.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, next steps from here, Mr. Moody, we come back on March 15. Is that correct?
Correct. And so, over the duration, it's open, so we will, the protest hearing will formally be had on the March 15 meeting, but if there's any changes in the petitions or people's stance, we will continue to take those in with a report at the 3/15 meeting.
Okay. And I think what I just heard from up here from Councilmember Boom Garden is, Ms. Langley, if we can reach out to our regional partners, City of Marysville, Yuba County, Sutter County, and get their input as well on this matter by March 15, is that what you were looking for?
Yeah, just the history, again, I think there are 24 up there, nine of them are in the City of Yuba City, 15 are outside.
Right.
Just stands to reason, like I've said, and I don't want to be redundant, but it seems like we ought to be chatting with the others.
Absolutely. I agree. So, anything else? Nothing else online, Sierra?
No public comment.
Okay. Then with that, then we will move from Agenda Item 6 to Agenda Item 7 because 6 will be back on March 15 and we'll take it with a presentation and hopefully input from the other jurisdictions we partner with. Agenda Item 7, annexation, South Block of the Lincoln East Pacific Plan. And again, this is Mr. Ben Moody, you have the floor.
Okay, so, all things annexation, so a lot of activity lately with potential building and development and occurring in the southwest, the Lincoln East Pacific Plan area. And so, there's been a lot of movement. So, since the city council has updated their growth policies and changed some of the specifics with the Lincoln East Pacific Plan requirements, with withdrawing those specific kind of roadblocks, we've seen a lot of action. So, with that, we've recently had the Baines annexation in a portion of this south, this block, so I'm calling it the South Block of the Lincoln East Pacific Plan, which is bordered by Lincoln Road on the north, George Washington on the west, Bog Road on the south, and Sanborn Road on the east. And so, recently, a 95, 96 unit subdivision called West Sanborn was approved at the very southeast corner there of the block, which would be the corner of Bog Road and Sanborn. And then with the annexation, the Baines annexation, it was a landowner application that with him being in the sphere under an existing master tax exchange agreement, he applied directly to LAFCO and went through an owner application to annex into the, into the area. And so, with that, there was a lot of talk on how to, how to annex the property consistent with the city's general plan strategically and how to have, you know, make sure that this is readily serviceable and it promotes the future development of the city. And so, there was comments, there was some discussion with LAFCO, comments from the county about pushing for an annexation to come, instead of doing individual property owners as they are contiguous, to push for an actual, bringing in the whole block at one time. And so, that way, it's squared off, it's not going in and out around different property owners that individually ask. And there's, you know, the roads are systematically, you know, within the county, within the city, who maintains what. And so, the county requested that we annex the entire area. Staff agrees it's worth, that's the best, best action to move forward. And so, with that, it's a different process. It's a, it's a city-initiated process. And so, with that, I need, the, in order to submit to LAFCO, we need the council's consideration tonight to approve the application to LAFCO. And with that, there's, there's property owners that, that aren't specific landowners. It's everybody in there will then go through the LAFCO process to be considered for annexation into the city. And so, what I have to you tonight is that basically initiate the annexation of the South Block of the Lincoln East Pacific Plan area by the Sutter County Local Agency Formation Committee, consistent with property owners' request. And so, what I left out of this, and I'll show on a future map here, is that since the Baines annexation and the, the changes in council policy, there's a lot of interest in, in potential development of that area. And so, we've been approached by multiple owners in there that would like to annex. And so, instead of doing, you know, five or six multiple one-offs, it's let's do it together. And so, I'll show a map here that has that. And so, it's, the project addresses city council's strategic goals, improves the city's infrastructure, increases public safety, fostering business-friendly policies, maintaining fiscal responsibility. And so, what you have here with this map is the current boundary in blue. And so, this is the recent Baines annexation. And then, what we're proposing is to go through the LAFCO process with the application all the way to the south, which would then include the yellow properties. LAFCO is the public agency, it's, there's, there's multiple representation on, on the board, which includes Sutter County, the City of Yuba City, independent districts, and Live Oak. And so, through that body, they'll run through the process regarding notifying the property owners and coordinating the, the legal process as far as the hearing and the vote on the item. And so, tonight, it's really to authorize the city to submit this application for consideration. So, in accordance with Sutter County LAFCO policies, there'll be a notice that goes out regarding the hearing based on how many registered voters are in there, and then they'll have an opportunity to voice their opinion. And so, tonight, the item before you again is, recommendations are AMB, which is the adopter resolution, requesting Sutter Local Agency Formation Commission to take proceedings for reorganization of the Lincoln East Pacific Plan, South Block area, and then authorize payment to LAFCO and the state for application processing. So, there's some fees, $6,000, it's approximately $10,000 and change for some of the state fees, the LAFCO annexation fee, and then also there's a Board of Equalization fee that will come. And so, with that, that's what we're asking, request for. And so, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And here in the pink is some of the properties that have recently requested they be included.
Mr. Moody, just a couple of questions, because when the Baines parcels all went through, I know my phone lit up as many others did, I just want to make sure that we're clear for the public on several things. We're doing this for the benefit of everyone in that area because Mr. Baines did that on his own. It wasn't anything led by the city or anything, it was, as you said, a separate property owner?
It's an owner application. So, once all of the, once all the puzzle pieces are in place with the specific plan, the environmental document, the master tax exchange being in within the city's sphere of influence, which this area is, an owner can submit a direct owner application to LAFCO when they meet LAFCO's criteria for being adjacent and hitting these certain rules about not forming an island. Even though it's an odd shape, they were directly adjacent and they met the criteria to be an owner application. And so, when it's an owner application, there's no vote by other property owners because he's already within the sphere of influence. It's really saying, hey, I want to do it, it's my property, vote to have me in. And that's consistent with the city's general plan, sphere of influence, et cetera. And so, that's why the noticing, I would say, was limited, you know, for maybe some of the adjacent property owners because there was really no notice requirement by LAFCO or for the city legally to go out and tell people because it was, it was a landowner application. Versus this application, which will be a city-initiated annexation, which will then trigger the notices to the, to the members in that block because of the number of voters and them not being landowner applicants.
Okay. Thank you, because that helps, it led right into the next question that I had, because one of the biggest concerns that came back was the city didn't notify the property owners that were adjacent, but it wasn't a city-led event, it was the occupied, it was Mr. Baines' initiative that did that. In this, is it the city's responsibility or is it LAFCO's responsibility to notify all the landowners in that?
Legally, a LAFCO application and a process that goes through there. There's definitely opportunity, it should, it depends on what agency or what threshold of notification or outreach for the distance that people want to do for the notification.
But for all those landowners, well, I'm just wondering, who's going to take the lead on the notification?
LAFCO will.
LAFCO will, not the city.
Correct.
Okay. That was the only two questions I had. Any more questions from the council?
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
So, just to make sure, the folks that are in the pink hash marks or diagonals, those folks have already indicated an interest.
Correct.
And so, we're, are we going to go reach out to the yellow, purely yellows? And if not, should we? Because we're initiating the annexation.
Staff's recommendation is to follow the LAFCO process with the notice for the public hearing.
It's a pleasure of the council. I mean, we saw what happened last time. There was some concern in it and it did throw some shade on us because there wasn't a lot of notification. I would agree with Mr. Moody, I think it is LAFCO's responsibility, but I do think, based upon prior things that have happened out there, it's worthy of a quick discussion whether or not we want to take initiative.
All right, thank you. Further discussion on the notification by the council?
Just that, if I may, I agree with Councilmember Boom Garden, is it might not be necessarily required for us. I mean, there's not very many doors to knock on. Why would it hurt? It wouldn't hurt for us to reach out in the gesture of goodwill and in the interest of being fully open and communication, wouldn't bother me a bit. In fact, they'd probably appreciate it.
Is there any potential pitfalls in this? Because it's assuming the responsibility of LAFCO. And I totally concur with what's gone on in the past and we had nothing to do with it, but it looked like we did. And I'd like to find out, Ms. Langley?
So, perhaps if Ben could briefly talk about the process. So perhaps if Ben could briefly talk about the process for if there are property owners out there that may not want to annex into the city, what their options are and what happens when they go to LAFCO? Because we have the potential here, if you have a property owner that's not interested in annexing into the city within that yellow area, and then that could almost create an inverted keyhole. And that could stop some future annexations as we move to the north. And so if Mr. Moody could talk a little bit about the process of how an annexation is approved, the numbers, the thresholds for when it would trigger that we have to go to the next level, and, you know, just the potential impacts if we don't annex the entire
So absolutely. And what you have is that you have existing homeowners on Sanborn Road. And so with those existing homeowners, a lot of them enjoy status quo. Not to say that all of them do or all of them don't, but that's historically where existing homeowners reside. And so with that, if a landowner decides to stay in the county, then you're not allowed to create an island. And so if one person wants to come in, like this corner property, and Mr. Sandu wants to come in, then that would create an island, so that would not be allowed. So then you'd have to stop, so the annexation would then either not be able to proceed with Mr., with the corner property or with Mr. Sandu. And so you have a situation where property owners will be affected depending on the timing of the application and who comes in. And so you have a problem there. And so with that, we have applicants that are prepared to proceed on their own. And so the applicants in the pink are prepared to proceed on their own, depending on the city's decision, and also as a backup plan. And so based on the timing and their desire to come into the city. And so the high probability is that if you have applicants, property owners here with a strong campaign of not coming into the city, then you've, it'll limit that ability to come into the city creating a permanent inverted keyhole. And then as you go north, this grows, which then affects the other areas of the Lincoln East Pacific Plant up towards Franklin Road, which then limits potential development up to the northwest. And so by no means are we trying to limit communication, but at the same time, it's kind of trying to sell, be a salesman to people. And so we feel like, go through the LAFCO process and let people participate as they need to. But I am happy to provide information at the discretion of the council.
Mr. Moody, is it possible, trying to thread the needle here, and Mr. Chaffin, if I split the needle, please correct me here. I don't want to take LAFCO's responsibility away from them. It's their process and their responsibility. I'm thinking, is there a way that we can simply make them, you know, go the extra mile, make them just aware of the process is occurring? Because we have to look at what's going to happen in the future, and they need to be able to have their voice heard at LAFCO of whether it's going to go through or not, because that's the deciding governing body there. But, and correct me, Councilmember Boomgarden, if this would be something different, but, you know, at least a letter or something from the city, just advising them the process, and it's going to be before LAFCO, and it's going to go that, not encouraging them to go separate, but just making them aware of, here's the process, and if you voice yea or nay, they're going to be sending out the information, and that's the governing body. Is that something that is doable, Mr. Chaffin? Is legally, can we do that?
Yes, through the mayor, if I may. The Sutter LAFCO actually has published an annexation process, and it would be a legal option if we wanted just to voluntarily mail that to the various property owners located within 300 feet of the annexation boundary, which is what is required under the Cortez-Ze Nochs Herzberg Act for LAFCO. So we could send it out, we could provide them with that process. LAFCO also has a process for giving notification, but it never hurts to notice twice. The thing is, is if you do adopt the resolution this evening, it technically starts the process, but it would help the public know, and they'd likely receive another notice within 60 days or so of 60 to 90 days of our notice. So it might help them to get the same notice twice.
Through the mayor, I am 100% in support of the big block. Having had a lot of history with annexations, contentious annexations, you know, when you start to have to do the piecemeal stuff, it becomes extremely cumbersome. My intent was never to take over LAFCO's work. It's just have a discussion amongst the council in regards to how much communication and transparency do you want to have on this, so that you can't get the potential down the road of someone saying, well, I didn't know about it. And that was my concern in raising the issue. It's not, not that I'm on LAFCO, and I guarantee you, I'm going to be a lot more vigilant on the notification this time, just to make sure that it flows in a fashion that it's supposed to. But I also know that there's been lots of discussion for many, many years about city-initiated annexations, and property owners, you know, feeling like they had been, you know, quietly, maybe intentionally, maybe non-intentionally, not made aware of something, and then all of a sudden it happens. And that's just not a good situation for us to have to deal with. So again, clarifying, trying to bring it to a little bit of closure, certainly not suggesting that we take over LAFCO's notification, just if the council's desire is to, is to just follow that up and say, hey, you know, the city has initiated an annexation of your property, and here's who you need to contact for any questions you may have, because they can protest it anyway. I mean, the fact that if we didn't send something to them, the same people, if they are properly notified, can protest.
Correct.
So, I mean, it's not stopping anything. It's just probably one extra level of communication.
Through the chair. I think all of us have had quite of an interest in the conversation with this particular section of our city. And my sense is, just based on the conversations with multiple individuals in the community there, and then talking with Ben, it seems, and I could be wrong on this, but it seems like the majority of the folks that are living in that area are aware of this process, another process that has gone on, and the difference between the city's process and the LAFCO, that was something that I learned in this particular process, as well as the discussion. And so it seems, what I'm most concerned about is hoping that we do not create another keyhole because of the complexities that are still within in that area. And so I think that Mr. Moody, along with our city executive team and lots of discussions, I believe that this recommendation is a really good recommendation, because it brings everything into more of a unified development and meets the general plan. And the other part of it that is so, I guess, beneficial and also needed, is that it already has infrastructure. So the infrastructure is already there, so it's a great place for potential growth and development, but balancing that process of how people end up being annexed into our city. I think the notifications are important. I think that the community in that block area that you're speaking of have been communicated in multiple sources, some directly from our city, some through LAFCO, some through the owners. Carmen Baines directly contacted some himself, and others within there. So I think that the process will work itself out, and I fully support this, and I think it's good for our city and it's good for the area that it's going to have some landowner applications if the city doesn't take the initiative to do this.
Any questions or comments?
Through the mayor. I think the sentiment of this council is that we do want to be as transparent as we possibly can, and we don't, the perception of being a bully. So any type of heads up on this that we can give those folks out there, I think we should...
Ms. Langley, do you have any comments on the notice? Okay. All right. So are we, as a council, asking that at least some form of communication be sent, pointing them in the direction of LAFCO be sent?
I'm supportive of that. I think LAFCO will do its process anyhow.
Okay. Do I have at least two or three nods up here? Okay, then...
It doesn't hurt to supplement what LAFCO is already going to do, just in the interest of being fully transparent in communication.
All right. All right. Any more questions from the council? Okay, then we will go to the public. Is there any questions or comments from the public? Any questions or comments? About online?
No public comment.
All right, then we'll bring it back to the council for action.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I move that we adopt a resolution requesting the Sutter County LAFCO to take proceeding for reorganization, annexation of the Lincoln East Pacific Plant South Block area to the City of Yuba City, proposed area generally bounded by Lincoln Road, George Washington Boulevard, Sanborn Drive, and Bog Road, and also authorize the payment to LAFCO and the state for application processing.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Councilmember Espendola, and a second by Councilmember Harris. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. We're going to Agenda Item 8, SB 1383, Compliance Ordinance Updates. And Mr. Moody, you are on the hot seat tonight again.
All sorts of fun ones there. So 1383, so this is, I sent a bill that has kind of had some buzz here the last few years. It's a big deal in the waste business. And so what we have before you is, so the bill is called the Short-lived Climate Pollutant Reduction Act of 2016, and it has to do with organic materials in the waste stream. And so when it passed, it really talks about taking that organic waste out of the waste stream, and then either, and I'm going to work through this, so bear with me a little bit, it's definitely not my wheelhouse, as I've been trying to work through the ordinances with the team. And so the big thing for the city, in addition to our contract with Recology, is that we're basically telling people now to take their food waste and put it into the green toter. And then, and then also that affects us at the wastewater plant with our solids that get hauled off to Recology. And then it also ties into our regional partnership with the RWMA and enforcement and notification to the city. And so what we have before us is that January 1st, 2022, the city needs to be in compliance with this act, this 1383. And then with that, we're adopting ordinances to be in compliance that we're bringing forward tonight, which is introducing this ordinance, which basically, let me work through, so the SB 3 Short-lived Climate Pollutant Reduction Act, for residents, the food waste goes and the organic waste for the city, its inspection, enforcement, and reporting requirements. What we're doing here is we're adding compliance with Cal Green standards. And so with the building code now, there's, it's with the 2019 building code update, but there's these Cal Green standards that also, when it's construction waste, it needs to, it's, it needs to be accounted for. And so through the building permit process now, if somebody is going to demo a building or with a new subdivision for any sort of building material, they have to designate that this is recyclable material, it's a building waste, and then they pay basically an extra charge when they go to dump it, that helps sort it out and then recycle it. And so then there's an accounting for that, an auditing process through Recology, and then also through the city as part of the Cal Green. And so one of the, so this ordinance tonight, this update, adds specific language. We had it with the 2019 code, but it reinforces it. Also with the, we added by ordinance, the Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance, so IMWELO. So through policy and through the building code, we were also previously doing this, but it specifically calls it out in the ordinance now, that basically, when people put in their front yards, we're going through a, you know, we're working through a worksheet that now meets drought-tolerant landscaping, and meets the criteria that they're water-efficient plants, and hits those criterias for California, how they've established it for efficient landscaping. And so it's regulation at its best, with the intent to divert waste and to save water and be more green. And so it amends the mandatory collection services. So we did a cleanup action, updated chapter and add SB 1383 Organic Wiki Definitions, Inspection Enforcement Mechanisms. We amend the placement of the garden refuges, so it allows for the placement of it into the green toter. And it also adds, includes a resolution to add administrative civil penalties and fees for the enforcement mechanism. And so with this, we've worked with RWMA as the regional partner, they've recommended this ordinance draft, and then we've also coordinated with the city attorney as to making sure we're in compliance with SB 1383, and then also in harmony with RWMA. And so next steps, so by adopting this, by initiating the ordinance, I'll come back to you here at a future meeting, near a future meeting, probably the next one, and say, okay, let's have a public hearing, and, well, we don't need the public hearing. Oh, correct me. At the next one, we just need to have a consideration of adopting it. And so when we adopt it, we'll then be in compliance with 1383, and we'll start the education and enforcement aspects that we will coordinate with RWMA and Recology. And so also, we will work to continue to finalize the amendment with Recology as our contractor to implement these, and then also a paper procurement ordinance or policy. And so we're working through, one more aspect of the 1383 is to establish procedures for purchasing paper. And so with that, there's, the law included elements about having, purchasing recycled paper over virgin paper. And so there's some thresholds in there about equal price or a certain amount of paper, or a certain amount of recyclables that I'm still working through. And so we're trying to figure out if that's something that could be done internally, and audit through a policy, or if it needs to come back with ordinance. So to be continued on that. And then we'll continue to coordinate with RWMA to initiate inspection outreach and to implement the ordinance updates. And so with that, I'm recommending A and B, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Any questions? All right. Mr. Moody, I'll just speak to this real briefly, as a member of the RWMA. I see how all of this works together. This is very, very important, because we're the only agency right now that's missing this piece of the puzzle. And when it gets into divergent numbers, we need, all of us, as part of this. So this has been a long time in waiting, and I do know, like you said, this has gone, same ordinances went to all the municipalities, all of our execs and our legal staff to make sure that we're all basically one community in this, so that we'll no longer have one set of rules here, then you go across the 10th Street Bridge, and there's another set of rules. So, but thank you for bringing this forward. Is there any comments from the public? Hearing none? Any online?
No public comment.
Okay, back to the council for action.
Through the mayor, if I may.
Yes.
I hope it's not too late. And Ben, if this is too deep in the weeds of a question, it's just a logistics question, a question I had, but mostly as a customer. If we're going to be, you know, extracting, I have three things in the kitchen now, right? If we're going to be extracting, say, food waste and putting in the green bin, again, this is, might, may be too much too soon, but are you allowed to put, if you have a plastic bag of that stuff, can you, you can't put a plastic bag in the green bin, right? You have to dump it out in there?
Correct. So no plastic in the green bin. And so, you know, I've had the similar thing, you know, what does this look like in real terms? Is it all of a sudden your new... Is it all of a sudden your new your new dispenser going to be three, three cans versus two cans? But it really doesn't change the volume with the current volume really going into the garbage. But yeah, how does it get separated? If you lived in Sutter and had chickens, you know, we don't have this problem. But but in UBS City, I don't quite know how we're going to handle that.
Was that a shot?
That was a shot.
Oh, I was gonna say, I'm just gonna get a pig. In my backyard.
And Councilmember Harris, the irony of this is you can't put a plastic bag with the food in there, but you know, the cardboard pizza boxes?
Yeah.
They can go in the green tote in the future.
Oh, thank you.
It's really strange. So I think education is going to be a huge component of this because it is trying to figure out, does this go here or that go there? And that's why they've also, even though this puts the penalties and all that, they're not looking at those being enforced for several years. It's just we've got to start lining it up. And so.
Just came to mind, again, it's probably too soon, but I thought I'd ask anyway.
We know what to get you for Christmas.
Bunch of chickens. I will move to approve Staff's recommendation, A and B.
Have a motion?
Second.
And I have a second. I got a motion by Councilmember Harris and a second by Councilmember Harris. All those in favor say aye.
Through the mayor.
Oh, yes.
You have to read it.
So sorry, we need to read the ordinance word for word. So Councilmember Harris, would you mind actually reading item A?
I would not mind at all. I move to approve item number A and B. A reads introduce an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Yuba City, adding section seven dash 10.03 of chapter 10 of Title VII, adding chapter 18, which is the Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance of Title VII, amending chapter three mandatory refuse collection services of Title VI, and amending section six dash 4.03 of chapter four of Title VI of the Yuba City Municipal Code to comply with Senate Bill 1383 by title only and waive the first reading.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris.
You're very welcome.
All right. And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Moody. You spent a lot of time up there this evening. All right, we'll move to agenda item nine, future agenda items. This is the opportunity to discuss with the city manager about items that came up in the meeting this evening that you would like to have brought back at a council at a later date. Are there any other comments relating to agenda items that may need to come back during a future meeting in the council? Okay. Hearing none? We'll move on to reports communications. The reports communications item provided for the council's information. No action can be taken on items under this section unless the council agrees to include it on a subsequent agenda. We will start with the city manager's report.
Good evening. Not much to report tonight, other than we are trying to schedule the first homeless workshop for March 29th at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers.
All righty. Thank you. We will go forward to council reports. Councilmember Boongard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was a quiet couple of weeks since the last council meeting. The biggest event that I attended was the Regional Housing Authority was my initial meeting. Couple notes there. Our fellow councilperson, Sean Harris, was recognized for his year of service. And they also recognized Becky Flores, who was a former person who worked for us here in the city in that regard, but also, I think, was sort of a point person on many of the programs. She's no longer with the agency, and they took a moment to recognize her efforts. Reports were given on owned properties of the RHA, given maintenance update, finance, budget. There was a relatively interesting item for at least for our first meeting where planning and community development program that was administered by the RHA was was dissolved. And I think probably at some point, you know, Mr. Moody, maybe you can share with us later on in maybe an email or whatever, the impacts to the city on that. We don't need to hear that tonight. You've been up there long enough. But I know there are some impacts to the City of Yuba City, and it would be probably helpful for the council to understand what those were. Other than that, that's it. That's my report. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Espendola.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Feather River Air Quality Management District. We had elections, elected live councilmember Gag as the new chairman, and the vice chairman is Sutter County Board Supervisor Conan. And I will continue to participate and be part of the Policy and Finance Committee. Two individuals, William Appleby, Appleby, excuse me, and Larry Munger, were appointed to the hearing board, part of the Feather River Air Quality Management. We had, we reviewed the state implementation plan, which is quite a lengthy plan, but I'm just going to give two highlights of the plan, and I'm still learning myself. It's quite a quite a task. One area that on fine particle matter, Yuba City and Marizole area was designated as a nonentainment in the 2006, but then was reached as an entainment in 2015, meaning that we reached those levels that we hadn't been reaching in air quality for our area. And in that is quite a large achievement for this management because we were one of, I believe, in the state of California that received and were at that level. So these plans are also have a connection because these plans are then coordinated through the Sacramento Federal Nonentainment Area, which is also a consultation work that goes in with Sacramento Area Council of Governments and the California Resource Board. So all these plans have an interconnection to all the work that we all do sometimes in representing different boards separately and or we connect in one way or another. Then we had a great, quick and fast meeting with the Gilzeizer Drainage District and, right, Councilmember Harris. So elected chairman, Sutter County Board Supervisor Conan. And thank you, Councilmember, for vice chairing me. Those big, big, big board to take care of. I roll my eyes in a joking manner. But we did review approval of expenditures and authorizing an audit. One thing that we're going to do in the future is this audit that has been delayed two years, that we're going to do an RFP to hire someone from the outside for that particular district. But this district also connects closely with the Integrated Water Region. There's a lot of connection to the grants that we receive through the Integrated Water Region that end up helping fix problems in the drainage, the Gilzeizer Drainage Canal. The county, no countywide RDA oversight meeting, no Sutter Animal Services, Regional Water Authority. I was invited to participate in a meeting with the final two state water board members, Laurel Firestone and Nicole Morgan. As we all know as a council, that the state water board will be visiting us and doing a tour here on March 11th. So in talking with state water board members, Firestone and and Morgan, that they're interested in really trying to find ways to help us as a city. So that was a great benefit as well. We had our team's workshop. Both have gone excellent. Great job on our city for that. Then participated on the League of California Cities, the Revenue Taxation Policy Committee. Wow, that was a long meeting with a lot of information. The general briefing that Diana shared with you all, please take a look at that because it really kind of gives a summary of all the different committees that the League of Cities is working. What we did is we ended up adopting existing policies and guiding principles. One thing that is quite interesting in, and I don't know, Diana, if you have been are aware of this, but they're putting together a city manager's sales tax work group that will work on the discussion because of all the issues right now with the state proposing some legislation on how they think that they could, you know, manage our taxes. And so the League of City is putting that together, and it would be great if our city manager would be part of that work group. They're going to be sending out a survey and requesting input and trying to figure out how they're going to identify which city manager will participate. And then we adopted our 2022 work plan and that, again, a lengthy plan. I also participated in the Association of California Waters Agencies Board Meeting, and a lot of really good things are coming out of that group as well. And I'll share more as we I get more clear definition on how we end up landing there. And the last thing is that I want to say that next month, all of us as a council are going to be celebrating Women's History Month, and I'm very much excited about that we're all going to share in this celebration in the next month and look forward to participating and celebrating the women of our city and our community. So thank you all for supporting that. I'm very grateful for that. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
All right. Thank you. In addition to Regional Housing Agency, which I definitely appreciate them asking me to stop by and for the recognition, they didn't have to do that and just it was nice. So I most of what I attended was SECOC related. I am on the subcommittee for the Land Use and Natural Resources. We had our first meeting of the year, approved our charge, as is so common in a lot of boards and whatnot. We have 38 million in funding that we oversee as part of that, including the Green Means Go program we've heard so much about. And then we also oversee land use and housing strategies, the extended plan of that for the region, also trying to decide how to put into motion the work of SECOC's Race and Equity Inclusion Group, particularly efforts to neutralize any disparity in housing and transportation opportunities, again, regionally. And then also to ways to connect our rural and urban, particularly with agriculture, and how we can serve the needs of agriculture with their transportation needs, that that industry needs. Prioritize our metrics for the six county regional trail network. Basically, what that means is we're trying to decide on what priorities we're going to put in place. So when an application for a project comes forward, how do we rank that? How do we score it? Who gets higher or lower? What are the priorities that we're going to give the most weight? Let's see here. And then Sabuca, we had a presentation of our our recent audit. We had a very clean audit as such, a very clean audit contains a lot of canned language and boilerplate stuff, but that's because there's nothing really to say other than good job. And it's it was really nice and relieved to see that. That was positive report as it could have been. They did, we have $200 million in projects that staff has identified that they would like to do ideally. If the world gave them a blank check, it would be $200 million to get these things done. Our staff has extricated from that $70 million were the projects we'd like to seek, seek funding for, which include 1.6 miles of a seepage cutoff wall down the Sutter Bypass East Levy, excuse me, the Lower Feather River West Levy, and 5.2 miles of the Sutter Bypass East Levy to mitigate some seepage they've had. Apparently, folks have been down there, says like a sieve when you take a look at it, which is pretty scary. So it'll be nice to get that taken care of. Also attended the government liaison meeting, Yuba City Unified School District. It was a pretty good meeting. We talk about kind of a lot of things. Ben, I want to thank you for giving the update for everything going on in the city, which is quite a bit. We also, Sutter County gave an update regarding Sutter Point and the status of that and an overview of their, a general overview of their employee negotiation process in place. The schools, much like us, they are moving along with their redistricting process, and they're going to have their final map being selected on the 22nd of this month. Looking forward to the water board meeting here in town. Really, that's going to be nothing but good can come of that, and it's going to be exciting and very relevant. Water is going to be an issue for many, many years to come, and we need to be on top of that. So it's going to be great. And then want to remind everybody, I think it was in the paper recently, if it wasn't today, my days blur, but the importance of covering standing water because mosquitoes are going crazy right now. I got eaten alive the other day tucking my neighbor out on his driveway, and man, we only had to, we had to stop after one beer. It was too, too many mosquitoes. Anyway, that's it. Thank you. Move on to whiskey, right?
Yeah. Change your drink. All right. Vice Mayor Kirchner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You covered everything I had. That's okay. So as Councilmember Harris talked about with Sabuca, in addition to that, I was nominated and accepted the chairmanship for Sabuca, which I was honored to do. I'm excited to get up to speed. I've got a lot to learn on what they've been working on and the direction that they're going in. As Councilmember Harris talked about, the focus right now is south of town on the East Levy and Sutter Bypass on Wadsworth Canal. We decided to create an ad hoc committee to discuss funding strategies. And so our first meeting will be tomorrow morning to discuss those strategies. In addition to that, as most of you know, this past year, there was some dredging work that was done at the mouth of the Yuba. And there is more need of that. If you've if you looked at a river lately, right at the mouth of the river, at the mouth of the Yuba moving south, and we're discussing the possibility of somehow involving Yuba County Water Agency with that. So we'll, we'll see if anything happens with that. Mosquito, like you said, it's front page of the paper today, they're asking you to to get rid of standing water. The only thing that happened with mosquito, the manager reached out to me, they've got property over on Market Street that was consistently getting broken into, vagrancy and different issues. And so I discussed it with Chief Baker, and it's being addressed. In conclusion, I would like to say how proud I am of our community members that showed up today, to speak up on an issue that many of us have heard about many, many times in the last couple of weeks and maybe have our own concerns about that, but also to our mayor's response about the importance of this council's integrity. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for saying that. And that's it.
Through the mayor. Vice Mayor Kirchner, did at Sabuca, did they talk about the funding with the Sutter Bypass? Did they give an update on that particular project?
So it's my understanding that's what tomorrow morning is going to be about, is coming up with a strategy for that funding.
For the funding, because it was received.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. For the designing and review and the study of that particular section, correct? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Okay. All right. Mine will be very brief, as my committee assignments tend to be light and then heavy. They'll pick up this week with Transit Authority. RWMA is counseled for this month, and then we will be turning around. GSAC has some upcoming meetings, had a lot of different, seems to be meetings and stuff going on across various projects that we brought everybody up to speed on that's coming up. We reported on the Intergovernmental Relations, or I'm going to call it the IRK, because it's much better. We're working on getting that set up to where that is going to be ongoing monthly, and we were working on some dates today for that. The biggest accomplishment that was mentioned earlier that we've really had over the past couple of weeks was finishing up the team building workshop between the executive team and the council and really looking at how we can come together and do things even more effectively for our city. And I just want to thank not only my colleagues up here, but the entire E-team for the honest, open, transparent dialogue we was able to have. And what I heard out of that was really you've got a roomful of people that really care about this city. that really care about this city and are trying to do the best that we all possibly can. And there's not a person that's sitting at that table that's not giving it everything they've got and going the extra mile. And, Mr. Moody, I'm just going to use you as an example because you were at the podium all night tonight. But you put in a lot of long hours, long days. And trust me, it goes, it goes noticed by us. We see all the work that goes in. But I just want to express my thank you because it's going to be a launching platform for us as working together as a team, and that gets back to our city manager. And we've talked about this, and I'm just going to share a little bit. And it's, you're not in trouble, Ms. Langley. But one of the key relationships that has to work in order for an organization to succeed is the, is the two chairs, basically. The CEO and the Chair of the Board, so the mayor and the city manager. And I will tell you right now, I will say this both privately and publicly. Ms. Langley, you have my utmost respect. You are a pleasure to work with. And it is, it is going to be noticeable as this council begins to move forward and you work with myself, the vice mayor going forward, and then, you know, later this year and such. Very, very happy to have you at the helm, and it is a pleasure to work with you in your leadership shows. So on that, I'll have more to report really next time because my meetings come up the next round. If there's nothing else to come before the council this evening, then I will declare us adjourned.